...to meet tonight and we get to discuss not only what you've already done, but oh, Lord, even talk about what you are doing and will do. And there is so much excitement right now. And God, we just thank you for the opportunity we have to meet. We pray that you would be, that you would be part of this. Lord, I pray that you would, that you would have my words be glorifying to you. And we just ask all of us for us today. Amen. All right. Well, welcome. To those of you that, that don't know me, my name is Shannon Merrick. I am the chairman of the board and the unlikely active head of school. But either way, that's, that's the role I'm filling this year. And I can tell you that coming from where I stood here six months ago, man, it's a change. Last time I served this podium, there was, there was a lot of hurt. There was a lot of anxiety. There was a lot of confusion. I felt like I needed a tomato spring. I didn't feel like that today. And I'm excited that I've been to stand here today and really come to you guys with a far greater sense of, of excitement and anticipation for what, for what God has in store for our school. I truly tell you, I couldn't be more excited about where all of our going. We've had some major wins at the school. There's, there's some really obvious exciting things happening. I see jobs standing right there. So we'll start with some of our exciting things happening in sports, if you guys don't know about it. But middle school cross country, they're competing for the ISAL championship today. I don't know if they've finished yet or not, but championship. And then Levina Perry took seventh at the state cross country final. Jacob Powers also took fifty-eighth out of one hundred and thirty in the state. So really just amazing things going on with our cross country team that is pretty, pretty new for our school. We haven't had one very long and already being successful in that. Our middle school volleyball team, district champs. There are quite a few folks not here with us semantically because they are playing right now for the tournament in San Antonio. That's really exciting. So, and that's actually our finance director, Jim, Jim Coward, that is coaching that team. So wearing lots of hats at the school. Everybody here is. High school volleyball, undefeated district champs. Not just undefeated, but never lost a set in district play. That's awesome. So, middle school football, this is this Saturday, league championship undefeated. And that game's at Blackwood, too, if y'all want to come support our middle school football guys. High school football, also undefeated in district, playing for, playing, we've got two more, two games here playing at home. One's this Friday and then the next one is actually following Friday on the Hearst. So lots of exciting stuff going on with athletics. Other, other successes that you guys may already know about. Our Einstein program, we started several years ago. We've had several graduates come out of our Einstein program. And these kids have now moved to a level of success that they have never been able to achieve before. They're on A D Honors. They're independent learners now. And that program has made an incredible difference in some of these kids' lives. And that's something to be celebrated. So, other things that I'm sure you guys have known and heard about as well, for any of you of them trying to help our kids with their homework. We've now launched a new curriculum of Math in Focus, which is a just world renowned curriculum. And we're really excited about where we're headed with math. We've got science models that are, that are coming in and bringing in a more hands-on approach to science. We're doing so many things and NBCA is quickly and already gaining attention as one of potentially the best math and science programs in Coeur d'Alene County. Because nobody else is doing what we've already got going here. And I have to say that there is a ton of thanks that has to go to our teachers for that. They deserve it because all of this is art and stuff. And they are working their tails off. So if you happen to see any of your teachers, certainly thank them, but if you happen to see a math teacher, they deserve a hug too. The other, so our Bible curriculum is, Andy Douglas has done a phenomenal job of shifting our Bible curriculum from filling the blank to true spiritual development. We're getting to watch families analyze scripture at home together as groups. We're seeing proof of that. We're seeing kids talk through their scriptures in public. It's, it's amazing, y'all. And we really, yeah. So something else that we are super excited to announce that you guys have probably noticed as well, we don't ignore everything we see in our surveys and everything we hear from our parents for year after year after year. And we have finally this year decided to act on security. And we have stepped out of the gate and we have two amazing student resource officers that are now on campus every day, all day. One of them is Mike Sandborn, who couldn't be here with us this evening. And the other is Vernon Alexander. Where's Vernon? There he is. Y'all, these guys are truly a blessing. Mike can't be here because he's actually at his daughter's volleyball game. But if you give a chance, get to know these guys. Vernon is over at the elementary school and Mike is here at the secondary. And they are some pretty amazing and outstanding men that are worth it to know. And I'm so excited to be here influencing our kids. Other things, speaking of security, we have a functioning gate at the elementary school. We're still waiting on the city inspection to start using it. This is the bronchus. Y'all can tell me when that's gonna happen. But the gate's up, so that's what we're gonna announce. And then other things we're doing, you know, we, I talked through a little bit in my letter and also gave you guys a budget. We as a board are really, really focusing heavily on trying to create financial stability for the school. We're trying to use new forecasting tools, new cash flow reporting. Some of these things are actually very, very new, but we're really excited about using them. We, we are in a better place financially now than we have been in any time I have ever been associated with the school, but even looking back through all of our books, we have never been headed the direction that we are now. And that is opening up so many avenues on where we can go in the future. And that's really exciting. And I thank you guys for that because the finances of this school are entirely dependent on the families at this school. And what a blessing it is that our families are willing to support. So thank you guys, truly. We are, we are trying to be the best biblical and financial stewards of what we have been entrusted with. And we're working hard at that. All the while, as you guys know, we were also able to give all of our teachers a forty percent raise. That is nowhere near the goal that we have. We also have other things that we are looking to do over the next several years of incorporating pay sales for our teachers, incorporating 401K plans. With everything we have going, this isn't the year to do all of that at once. There's just not enough. So if anybody here is willing to stroke that check, to go on that tour, we'd love to speak with you. We simply can't stroke it this year, but we are working towards those goals. And those are on the horizon. The other thing that's, that everyone's curious and me, far more so than any of you, is the head of school search. So the head of school search committee is very active and very underway. And we actually already have more than two dozen really well-qualified candidates who we've, we've networked with and have now applied or have applied to contacts that we've made. Our, our head of school search committee has met with the head of our regional ACSI board. We've met with other local heads of school. We've called as many people as we can. We've attended, Baylor is actually doing a Center for Christian Essence program. Went up there, then spent a day doing networking with other heads of school across the state. And we are really working diligently to try to find who God has in store for our school. This is really an important search. This is something that we're not, we're not taking lightly. We're not rushing into as much as I would love to have a head of school tomorrow. That's not what we're, that's not what we're looking to do. We are looking to prayerfully consider who is it that God has in store. In that, we have also, we've also benefited from some of the wisdom that our consultant that we brought in, but I'll let you use here shortly. He's the, he's the guy sitting here that no one recognizes. His name's David Bartlett. And he is Australian, so you're gonna enjoy his accent a lot more than mine. And he has, he has gifted us with quite a reset of resources and strategy and logistics that is already assisting our head of school search committee even just the last few days. But that's been truly a blessing as well. So the hope is that God would, we will be ready to announce our next head of school by spring break. That's our hope. That's, that's what we're searching for. That's what I'm gonna ask you guys if you pray anything, because we need the prayer. These are all wins that those of you guys are aware of. These are all neat things going on, like people have heard about. There's also a lot of really neat things going on that are a little more under the surface that if you don't work here, you may not realize. You know, one of the, one of the things that's pretty neat is despite all the uncertainty that we just came out of and the confusion, the chaos and everything else that it's due, two thousand nineteen has been the year of the fastest growth our school has ever seen. We have ninety-three new students this year. That's amazing. So something else y'all may not know about is Duke does a, what they call their talents, let me get this right, talent identification program. And what they do is they look for kids that are above the top ninety-five percent in testing on the national tests. For us, that's the, the Tara Nova testing. And in our elementary, between fourth and fifth grade, we've had thirteen kids that were identified to be in the top ninety-five percentile of the entire nation. That's amazing, y'all. So what that means is Duke is now providing some assistance and some support for us of them pouring those kids with additional resources to try to, to build them up further. Something else is, as you guys probably saw in my, in my newsletter, our goal that we've set as a board for this year is relational excellence as a Christian team. That's something that, man, y'all, we are seeing fruits of daily, not just amongst staff, not just amongst our interactions with parents, but even amongst students themselves. You know, we, we're creating an environment that one teacher told me, it hasn't been like this in, in ten years. And that's exciting. Another teacher even described it in a way that, she said, "I actually now enjoy going to the teacher's lounge. The relationships are real, the gossip is not minimal, and the support, encouragement, and empowerment is still lovely we've never seen." So, and that's awesome. Y'all may not know that we even had a couple of staff that were ready to leave. They were turning in their letters of resignation. They actually gave me their two lease notes before we started this year. Those staff have agreed to stay. They've worked through in an amazing biblical way the disagreements and the conflicts that they've had. And those staff announced some of our greatest shining stars of what Christ's reconciliation looks like and are very vocal in how they're treating, in how they're relaying that over to their students, but also behind their demeanor with, with other staff members. And have those now come and thanked us personally on multiple occasions for just encouraging them to take that push, just in relational excellence. You know, this is something that, that we're trying to teach. Coach Wood took fathers and sons on a, on a father-son football retreat. And dads and boys got to sit together and learn about what does biblical manhood look like? What does, what does Christ look like so that we can follow Him the way? And then even after that, those boys then got to sit and watch one afternoon where two of them did have a pretty intense disagreement. But the real win in that situation was all the other kids in the locker room got to stay and got to watch as Coach Wood walked them through, what does this look like to walk through biblical conflict resolution where you guys actually own your own part and you do this the right way? Since that time, multiple of those boys that were in that locker room at that time have now started using some of that, those words and using some of their tools in other relationships. And, and that's all with nothing more than some facilitated conflict. There's some really neat things happening relationally, the work of differences. We've had some, some meetings with some, you know, some tearful recognition of our own personal hangups. But it's leading us all to a place where we're really excited to be. There's really a few key aspects that fall into this when we talk about relational help. When we, when we talk about our ability to function as a team, one of the most important aspects of how we function as a team is how we respond when things don't go as planned. That's really what sets us apart. And, uh, you hear the rain starting? Conflict and reconciliation, you guys, these are things that I harp on a lot, the teachers have heard me harp on a lot. This is something that I harp on a lot because y'all not take this seriously. There is nothing else outside of Jesus Himself that all sixty-six books of Bible discuss. And in fact, you know, when you really look at it, this is one of the, one of the defining characteristics of God's approach to man. You know, you see, because of sin, man, we created this debt in our relationship with God. And the entire Bible is about how God then chooses to pursue us despite our rejection of him. He chooses to restore the relationship despite the fact that we may not even want to. And he chases after us. Y'all, he even sent his son to die for it. This is important to God. So when Christ says things like, "Love others as I have loved you," or when Paul says, "As the Lord has forgiven you, so you must forgive," that's what they're talking about. Because it's really easy to love other people who may love us in return, but it's tough to do that when we're facing someone who's opposed to us, when we're facing someone who's rejecting us or creating conflict. But what creates a defining characteristic for Christians is what we do in those situations. Because by this, you will know that, oh, they, people will know that you are by my side if you have love for one another. That's what makes us different. That's why Christ said, "Blessed is the peace of the Christian." I've no doubt that you guys are all sitting here thinking, "I didn't come here for a service. I didn't come here to preach that." And I'm not preaching that as much as I'm trying to be. It's a while we're doing what we're doing because we need the help. We need you guys to come alongside us in this journey. You know, if we're gonna look different as a school, our school is a community. Our school is not just a board. Our school is not just our teachers. Our school's actually not. Our school's, it's all of us together. If you guys as parents have a greater impact on what this community looks like than almost any one of us ever will, because you guys are not truly in the rest of the community. We tend to be in our bubble. Our parents are not. Our parents are what can make us look different to the rest of this community when we do this well. And when we have, when we deal with disagreements in a healthy biblical way. I'm not gonna go through all conflict resolutions, but I do think I touched on three really good points. And I hope that you guys can start realizing that, you guys can understand what we're using here and kind of the process that we go through with conflict. Number one is our first goal in any conflict is to glorify God. That's always our way of going. Instead of focusing on what we want, we wanna always be reminded that God's perspective is in this situation. And what does God want to have come out of us? And we have to ask, "How can I please an almighty like this?" The second thing, this is the hardest, and this is honestly what should probably take the most of my time, is Matthew seven five, get the log at R and I. We gotta own our part. It's so easy to see everything coming along with everybody else, but the most challenging part is recognizing our sin, potentially our harmful actions, potentially our harmful words. But what's even harder to recognize is what attitudes and biases might we need to be bringing to the conversation? What, what lens are we seeing other people through that may need to be in conflict? So when we talk about Romans twelve, we say things like, "And as much as it depends on you being a piece of others." What that means is, is you find what part of that conflict you need to own. It may just be ten percent, but then you go own that ten percent and you seek forgiveness. Without expectation, they may not be in the same place unless you are. But that's what we, that's how we start. And then after all of that, we give you that third point that everybody always likes to jump to, refer to Matthew eighteen, "Go and tell your brother it's sin." And there is, there is truth in that, but there's also Proverbs nineteen eleven. "It is for his glory to overlook an offense." Y'all need to overlook what we can't. We tend to focus on a really, on a lot of really petty issues. We tend to love a lot of little things about us. There's even books written about that. Don't sweat the small stuff that aren't even typical. Like even secular people recognize, man, we really sweat a lot of small stuff. But when we say Matthew eighteen and we say, "Go directly to the person in love," what that doesn't mean? It doesn't mean we go spread. It doesn't mean we go talk to other people. And this is the part I really need to know, help with the parents. We really need to know, help with the parents. Gossip kills culture. There is nothing at this school that could kill everything we have going for us faster than gossip or creating dissension. And that's where I need y'all's help. I need y'all's help in trying to keep our kids from doing this. I need y'all's help in trying to keep us from doing this. I need y'all's help in keeping us accountable for seeing us doing it. And that's, that's one of my asks in this, is that you guys would come alongside us for conflict resolution. Because you see, as a school, we're seeking to be federatives. And we also recognize, and I need to personally, as the president, seek forgiveness from y'all. We haven't done this as well in the past as we should have. We don't, we don't have a great process on even how you could come to us, reach you, the grievance process, or, or what's a clear channel of communication. That's on us. That's giving them. We're creating, we aligns for that. We're setting up, we're setting up avenues and channels for that. Because as we do this, we glorify God. And as we, as we create these relationships, in these relationships, we also create trust. Trust is where we build on teams. Our school has functioned for a long time in a, in a typical corporate top-down leadership model. You've got a CEO, all problems go all the way up to the CEO. The CEO takes care of all problems, tells everybody else what to do. The problem with that, as we have learned from experience, it has, I'm sure all of you have learned, is when that top is three different people over four years, there is an unbelievable non-vincibility that creates. And that's not the way we want our school to function. We are, we're seeking to create teams. We're seeking to create a foundational approach where the leadership of this school actually relies with the teaching. And we are, we are pushing to do this. We are trying to show new ways of doing this, and it's very different than most folks are used to. It's different than some of our teachers are used to. They're not used to coming to administration with, "Here's what I intend to do." It's typically in the past, then you just come to me and ask and I'll tell you what to do. But that's not where we wanna go. And what we wanna do is create stability in this. Part of creating this stability has to do with governance. And I promise I am eventually gonna stop talking very, very soon. So governance is a big fancy word for how school runs. Governance is essentially the structure or framework by which everything else is decided on how to function. Think of it as a constitution. Our constitution previously has been one where it promoted this very top-down leadership approach. We abandoned that as a board last year. And we have been functioning currently without a great model of governance and have been searching and praying for, all right, where should this go? Fundamentally, we wanna create a relational form of governance that's based on, on foundations of biblical principles that will outlast whoever it may be that lands in our next head of school, but will certainly outlast this board. And we think we found that. Actually, how do I tell you that we know we found it? And the name of it's called community governance. Community governance is a, is a model that was actually designed by Resolve Consulting, and, which is based out of Australia. And they worked in conjunction with ACSI to create a model or a practice that fills in all of these gaps that are missing for what does this look like biblically to run an institution? In an effort to do this, we thought about trying to do it ourselves. And then we got really overwhelmed really fast because that's not in our school set. None of us are lawyers. None of us know how to write a constitution. And none of you want us to do them. So we have sought help. And that's why we have, as a board, paid to bring in Mr. Bartlett, who so graciously he brings, we fly here from Australia and has spent a week with us, helping us out in many ways. But one of the biggest things he's helped us out with is changing our governance and trying to, to provide a method by which we can create sustainability going into the future. I'd love to stand here and tell you about community governance, but honestly, I think you're tired of hearing me talk because I've talked a long time. And he sounds like he. So I'm gonna let David come up here and tell you guys a little bit more about where we're going and, and how, and why, y'all, see, why we're and how, and why y'all seem a lot more excited about where we're headed.
I'm taking this out of you because I'm six foot ten and I don't wanna spend the night. G'day! G'day! Gonna give me a Texas free. G'day! Um, good job, good, good, good job. It has been a privilege to be here this week, working with your board and your management to talk through community governance and what that might look like here for NVCA. But I'm conscious, if I was you, sitting in those positions, my first thought is, "Why would an Australian have anything at all about a school in Texas, NVCA?" Surely, all Australians today have a new, these five crocodiles, have kangaroos as pets, and fruit trees on barbies. Well, yes, I do all those three things. Well, maybe with five crocodiles, but they actually taste fantastic bar to eat with a bit of applewood in the smoker. Very nice. So I wanna give you a little bit of background on my journey in Christian schooling for Starfleet. Before I talk, I'll do a little bit about the work that we've been doing this week with the board and the leaders of the school. And if you want to, yeah, and see this later, feel free to wander up and sit here, you won't bother me at all if you want to do that. So my background, twenty-nine years, almost thirty, for twenty-nine years, I've been involved directly in Christian education globally. So for the first thirteen of those, I was a community school in Sydney, Australia, as a business manager. And had the joy of seeing that school grow from six hundred students to about thirteen hundred students. And for the last sixteen years, running Resolve and working with ACSI to, in the area of governance, leadership and financial management of Christian schools. And so community governance would work from a really embedded experience of Christian schools. I myself am a graduate of public school education and grow up. My three boys, Andrew, Christopher, and Ayo, all went through a K-12 Christian school, much like this one. Where I live is a place called the Centre Coast of New South Wales, and it's halfway between two cities, the city of Sydney and the city of Newcastle. And so even where I live, I picked up this week, there's some similarities with where you guys speak between Austin and San Antonio. We're going to find ourselves as six people from Sydney or people from Newcastle, we're the central coasters, we're coasters, what we call that. And so, working globally with Christian schools, you have to take account of culture. Cultures are different. We carry, I carry all sorts of cultural baggage, positive things and negative things because I'm Australian. And you carry lots of cultural baggage as well. So how do you actually work in a consulting sense when you've got those cultural nuances operating? Well, our approach was to actually focus on biblical truth. Because biblical truth and biblical principles cut across cultures. They really do. And they are part of our life. And they are part of our experience. Right now, my business partner, there's two of us, is in Panama, working with Latin American Christian school leaders about community governance, which has just been translated into Spanish, so that it can impact that whole part of the world. And in fact, that community governance framework, we're humbled to, to, to just experience. God is using this so far in fifty-seven countries around the world, including the United States. Because it, it is, it's a way of telling stories and teaching principles of good community relationships in Christian organizations. So your board chairman's been talking about relationships and, and relationships between each of you, your parents, and your staff, and your parent before. What community governance does is take that constitution piece that he was also talking about and put that through the perspective of what the Bible says about relationships. So how can an organization reflect biblical relationships and dynamic well? So this school had, had used a system of governance called policy governance by John Carter. It's a great system, but it's, it's, it's very corporate in its influences, and it is very top-down, as Shannon explained. And so, it's community governance, it is a top-down, it's, it's a circle of community representing body of Christ, working with different roles to further revision, to, to further revisions for Christian schooling. And so I'm, I'm not gonna give you the full lecture on community governance tonight, but I thought it was really an important privilege for me to be here tonight and tell you a little bit about what I've been working with your board on, particularly around the relationships of the school. And within relationships, the accountability to come to those relationships, the responsibility we have to each other for healthy relationship. Because in community governance, what we're trying to describe is what are the markers of healthy relationship? And then what can happen that causes unhealthy relationship? Please, I'm asking you to understand me?
Yeah.
I, I do tend to speak a little fast sometimes, but I am slowing down, and I'm trying to roll my Rs, because the Australian accent is a bit of a challenge at times. Alright, at the very center, this little center circle represents your school. It also represents, as you, as I talk to you, you can think about your church or your Christian other charity, like Youth for Christ or any other Christian organizational, organization. So we've worked across schools, churches, charities, but the center circle represents the core, the core community of your school. And you can see there a little shadow, watermark of the body, the body of Christ. So that's representing that body language of, we all have different parts, and we all have different roles to play. And there's four key groups that we describe in, in the school. The first of these are the beneficiaries at the top right. They've got their hands in the symbol. They're receiving the most direct benefits of the ministry. So in your case, who would be, who do you think the beneficiaries are over your school?
Students.
Students, parents, grandparents, yeah, the kids, students, and the families, the families that make up this community. Next to that are the personnel. We don't use the word staff or employees, because personnel encompasses volunteers and paid people. So everybody that's stopped that job of delivering the ministry, the feet, the hands and feet of working in the ministry day-to-day virtually, month-to-month. So the personnel have had a little doing job. So those two groups of people live in a zone, see the little dash line across the center, above a line of what we call the management zone. So that's where the day-to-day operations of the school happen. And so the, the key relationships are the three personnel and the beneficiaries in relation to how the school is run. That we work how. So if, if your question about something to do with the school that concern you might have, or a question about the school you might have as a parent, if it's a question about how the school is run day-to-day, the best relationships to talk to about that are the personnel around the community governance framework. The third group, the board. The board are the brains, they may disagree with that. The board represents the brains, and that, what that says is, they're, they're charged with thinking about the future, planning for the future, setting strategies, discerning on behalf of the whole community what God has called us to do next. But they don't do that in isolation. Their primary relationship is with personnel. In terms of what we're going to do strategically, what are we going to plan? What is this school going to look like in five years, ten years, twenty years? And there is this global zone called governance. Then there's the fourth group, the moral owners. This is the hardest one to get our heads around. The moral owners are the heartbeat of our school. The people who really hold the core values, purposes, and DNA and why we're acting fundamentally. In your school, right now, today, the constitution, the bylaws that are writ, that are written currently say that the board members are also the members of the, not the proper chapter, non-profit chapter, the organizational structure. So currently, the board members are both of these groups. There's only one arrogant. So that's one example of the teaching I've been giving this week, to say, "That's potentially unhealthy, because who's the board accountable to? What if the board goes wrong?" I'm not saying that, have gone wrong, but what if they do? We're all human. It's a possibility, right? It is, it's a possibility. So what was a really, really, for me, you need to know you've got a special board, because they are in humility, they are very transparent, and they are really looking to put in place a governance model and, and framework that is gonna set you up for health for the long term. And so this week, they were happy for me to share, but there's a decision, a specific decision to say, "Sure, the board members are, the board of trustees are also the members of the incorporated charity. But we need some more foundational efforts of the incorporated charity that they can also be accountable to." And so there'll be a process that you'll hear more about. It'll take a while, because it does involve changing bylaws, to actually get it better and relate to and create a moral ownership group that the board can, can be accountable to, to help determine who has the authority, who is going to drive this school forward. What's great about moral ownership group is they can, from the Christian community, which is this next community, the broader Christian community, they can find key, mature Christian people that understand the DNA of this school, who are sold out for the values, purpose, vision of NVCS, and invite them to become moral owners. The only job the moral owners really have is to elect the board and hold the board accountable. So they're not on the board, they're not gonna end up fighting with the board. They're actually a safeguard, they're a safety guard. They're actually mature, feminine women who can actually provide that sort of connection to why we're here long-term. So over time, over the next number of years, as, as some board members retire, they may become, they may continue to become or stay as moral owners, but we may no longer on the board. You may find new, really switched on alive Christian people who are new to your school community, and you think, "They can grab on the board one day." They don't think we're straight on the board from the Christian community. That would be unhealthy. Why? Because they don't know yet what will DNA this. They don't really know your values, purpose, and vision. So you can bring them on as a moral owner group, and then they get an opportunity to serve, to then start to get involved, maybe in committees, and maybe eventually be on the board. It's a much healthier model for this area of governance. And so that's what we've been working on this week in terms of looking at some of the governance processes in the school. So back to the parents, the rural parents. What's good about this too, if you only need to visualize these four arrows and the circle in the middle, notice that all the arrows are pointing to values, purpose, and vision. And that's because everything we do in the school, whether it's policies, program, customs, traditions, nets, should all reflect and be consistent with our values, purpose, and vision. If they're not, those arrows get wobbly and can get destructive. For example, if you hire, hire a head of school that is not a good fit for your community, they could have a different view of why we exist. And they could end up pulling that values, purpose, vision up into this top management zone. That's unhealthy. What has to happen is this key relationship, one of the board's key jobs is to make sure they hire the right style of head of school. And they are much more equipped, having learned some, some lessons from previous times, much more equipped to take a much more holistic view of the kind of head of school that should be looked for for this school. And that head of school, they should, they would be looking for a head of school that is competent. But they'll also be looking for a head of school, and they'll be assessing character, they'll be assessing chemistry, and absolutely most importantly, they'll be assessing calling. And those, those big aspects is really testing their fit with values, purpose, and vision. So if you're a parent and you've got a problem about our, who's happening at school, you would naturally go to the staff members concerned. That means if you, for whatever reason, let's say, I, I, I collect stories, I've worked with hundreds of Christian schools. So this would ever happen in your school, so I've sent another school. The parents run into a board member from the car park, out in the car park, and they go, "Oh, play our symptoms. My Johnny's in the wrong class, I want you to leave to another class, there's a fight going on." And, and they just give the board members a whole lot of information and complain, and expect the board to do something with it. So in that scenario, the parent has gone across you and, and been relating to the board. That's inappropriate for the health of the school. Now, notice though, you can go across, the arrows do point across. But the only time you, when you cross this line, you should be talking about values, purpose, and vision. So by all means, go up to any of these board members after tonight and talk at length about the values, purpose, and vision of this school, and the values and purpose and vision that the board is carrying, and, and on your behalf and on behalf of the whole community. That's absolutely appropriate. So in the same way, at the end of the year presentation night, when you do have a head of school now deployed, that head of school's gonna be standing up and telling all about how this school's run. The only time you should hear from the board chair representing the board is when they're talking about values, purpose, and vision. So at the moment, Shannon's acting head of school, so he's wearing two hats. So tonight, you heard Shannon make the personnel hat on, and then towards the end of this speaking, he put that hat on. Another thing about hats, that hat, you have steps and, they're really cool hats, right? We have a Cooperus, they're cool, well. So we're gonna start, you have Cooperus, you have your steps on. Imagine you're a board member and you've got your cool hat on. When you walk out of that boardroom, you have to leave the hat there. You don't wear that hat outside that boardroom. The only time the board is the board is when it meets together in governance. That's, that's it. And so part of the learning in the board too is to say, "How do we carefully tell our parents we love them and what, what their concerns are really important to us?" But we wanna encourage them to go and talk to the teacher concerned about their problem if it's a how issue. That's, so remember hats. And particularly, I'm gonna pick on your board chair, because I've been picking on him all week. He's an interesting person, because he's a moral owner, he's a board member, he's a personnel at the moment, and he's a parent. So he sits in every four apiece. Pretty well sitting in board personnel beneficiaries, any of you guys as well? Yeah. That, that, that's a real challenge, that's why you've gotta remember hats. So if you're at the local football game, flipping burgers, in support of the team, you've got your... got your, uh, cap with the greasy stains on it, the sweat marks, and the, it's a bit picked, it's, it's a hat, it's not particularly attractive, it's your volunteer hat. So you've got your volunteer hat on. So you'll see all your board members in this community regularly, being mums and dads, being volunteers, but when they're there, they're not board members. So, so yeah, treat them like you treat any other parent, any other friend, colleague. So that's community governance in a nutshell, briefly speaking. Have we got time for a couple of questions?
Sure.
Is that all right? Does anyone have any questions in relation to what I've shared? Always dangerous, not really, mind taking my mouth. Does anyone have any questions about that? Is it clear? Yep? Head of school, he's in personnel thing, and he's, he's really the leader of that. But again, with his board, what Shannon described earlier, we'd call distributed leadership. So instead of top-down leadership, very much the model going forward will be one of distributed leadership. So even with the new head of school, one of the chemistry characteristics of his, of that person, his, or the leadership style that the, the school will be looking for, is their ability to work in teams. Because you're adding a team, you're senior leadership, uh, mature, Christian educators who are really good at what they do and have great leadership. Uh, and, and that leadership, you've seen it, you've seen that up close. And so really, personnel moving forward isn't going to be the CEO model, it'll still be the first and my equals, we call them. So the CEO of the head of school is still, still the leader of the leaders, still the, the first and my equals, but there's a requirement to be a team that approaches that from a team perspective, and then push that, and just continue to distribute that leadership down into the team. Any other questions?
So if a policy needs to be adapted or modified, as a parent, I see a policy and there's a problem with that policy. In your model, I have to go to the personnel, but the personnel can't major change the policy because that's got to go to the board.
Correct. But the good thing that's coming is there's requirements that aren't there at the moment with new policy in a way, if, if this relationship's bogged down, in other words, if the parent says, I really think this policy needs to be changed, and there isn't a way for that relationship to be satisfied adequately, there are, there are only three conflict mechanisms where that can, they're moved from this, but this group down to this group. You just don't go directly to that group. Because what you do by going directly to that group of policy is you undermine the delegated authority of this group to run the school. And really, the board, they're volunteers. They're only doing once a month, well, more than once a month at the moment, but they're only doing as volunteers for infrequent times compared to the staff coming here all the time. So the best people to write policy on how the school is being run are personnel, not the board. But the board have that responsibility of writing new policy to personnel, that they want to hear back, they must monitor compliance with policy. And there's a thing called reporting by exception. If policies are not being followed, if there's problems with policy, they are going to be required to report that to the board. And if it doesn't happen, if there's somehow a blockage, which is less likely to happen moving forward with a team approach, uh, that can come through, through a grievance process. And the team, even down to the board reporting, it will be more of a compilation of reports, not just a report from one head of school. It'll be a report from school operations, so that gives lots of opportunity then for the voices of this group to be heard through to the board. So it's all about safety. We all want to be safe in our community, and so we want parents to feel they're safe, and they've got safe ways to rank genuine concerns and have them dealt with. And so to do that, we, we were talking about a structure that's far more built around relationship than the previous structures have been. And that's what we're putting together.
So I see going counterclockwise, so I also see those clockwise. So essentially, if we go clockwise, are you not still going to the board?
Yeah, so the clockwise, you are still going to the board, there's, there's each way going around the thing. I'll make a big distinction between how and why, which probably answers that sort of question. The board works this way because it, it, it wants to impact this, but it needs to do it strategically. So every three years, there should be a strategic plan. But before you actually do, as part of doing that strategic plan process, which is what are we doing strategically, uh, the board would go to the community as a whole with a sentiment survey and gather feedback on the areas of success and the areas of difficulty in the school. And when I say everybody, I mean every student from grade five, complete grade five up, um, every parent, every staff member, every board member is involved in that strategic planning process. So that way, the board gets, once every three years, a temperature check on the whole community, which is a really important part of the success of this. So the arrows do need to go both ways.
Can you give an example of the clockwise with the why?
This one? Sometimes, yep, so parents, parents become, so some of them, ultimate holders of the values, purpose, and vision of this school. And so if you're a, a Christian parent who's educated multiple children through this school, your heart continues to burn with passion for this school, you get why it's here. There's an opportunity for you to continue to serve as a moral owner, and that's why there's an arrow going this way. And so there's, it's not a regular thing, so there's nothing about how, there, it's only in relation to why. So it's very limited in terms of how that relationship looks. And all of these things will be spelled out obviously in a lot more detail, but I'm just giving you, I guess, tonight, that overview of probably should go to four roles.
So the process is sound, maybe not so missing on communication that has to translate and more personnel, like parents. It looks like it's got a good one coming in and how that can be made.
Yep. And that, actually, there is a lot of work to be done, and it would probably take 12 months just to get it where it needs to be in terms of reporting and communication, because there doesn't have to be a higher level of communication and transparency in that communication. For instance, we talk about not just giving people raw numbers and a budget or a financial report, but giving people trends, giving people pie charts that are financial, actually helping people understand how the school works and how the authority that's given here is being used. So the board, and in terms of its annual report to the community, will do, will do more work on how it communicates its daily values and vision, and its stewardship of the authority that's been given to govern the school. In terms of operation, that, that, that's, that's a work in progress in every school, and in terms of communication, but, uh, obviously without a head of school, there's been a season of difficulty, but I would expect, I, I certainly worked with a leadership team this week, and certainly the leadership team are very excited about being more structured in their thinking about how they look at communications, even down to having a communications master plan, if we talk about communications master plan.
So I want to also kind of add that, one of the reasons that I'm really excited about the moral owners, because I think it actually adds a lot to that transparency. You know, it, it gives more voice to, to what's going on by spreading it to other people that are, are really tied into the vision and values. It's hard for us to do that with all parents, but if we shrink that group down to 20 or 30, it's just more people that are there that can see what's happening and help communicate better what's going on. I think that that's a big advantage to that.
Will the board still be a plan following the rest of the government knowledge?
A bit of both, yeah. So it'd be, it'd be, essentially, um, the board will still nominate potential new, new members, because the board will be looking for skill sets that, that are in areas of, areas of current weakness, for instance, and they'll present that to the foundation members, and they'll be, they'll be elected. Yeah. So that just improves, yeah, that just improves that, uh, yeah. So I can go in and then, uh, I'll hang around for 10 minutes or so afterwards, if you want to, um, come and ask me a question, and I'll hand back to the desk. Thank you very much, Melissa.
So, Chuck, you know, you guys heard me rant a little bit, and then, uh, I've got a few more to pull, I'll show you the top. Uh, to try to put a little bit in perspective, and something that we all understand a little bit more about everything I just discussed, if we were to do what we as a board are trying to do on a national level, what would this look like? We just lost the president, we're rewriting our constitution, we're cancelling out our, you know, massive indebtedness, we're completely changing in every way of the way that we run leadership, oh yeah, and we're also trying to completely re-change culture and the ways that we act interpersonally across the entire community. This is, uh, this is no small undertaking, and this board here has been working their tail toe. So. But truly, I really am excited. I'm excited about this, I'm excited about the fact that, you know, we, we as a board recognize that we are valid and always will be, no matter who's standing at this podium, the leadership of our school should not depend upon the personality behind this podium. The stability of our school should not depend upon the personality of who's behind this podium. And as a result, we're, we're seeking to create accountability, uh, that's both for ourselves and also moving forward. But all of these things we have going right now, as many balls as we have in the air, this is so exciting. I've never been more excited about where we are as a school, and I'm excited to get to be a part of it. There's three asks that I'm going to ask from you guys, as families, as parents, as even as staff. Number one, we need prayer. We need lots of it. Please pray for us, pray for God and wisdom for our board, pray for wisdom for our staff as we continue to grow together, as we continue to learn how to do this. Please also just pray for our next head of school, and then may God bring us what he has in store for us, and may he open our eyes to who that is. The second thing, partner with us as we create relational excellence as a Christian team. Partner with us as we can, we try to resolve issues in a biblical way. You know, talk to your kids about this, talk to teachers about this, take problems directly to people rather than anyone else. This is a community, let's, let's do this in a beautiful, ethical way. The third ask, and this is actually a topic of ours for me, because I don't invite standing in front of everyone and then talking about this, but the most uncomfortable ask is I need to ask you guys help in partnering with us on protective aid. The safety of our children is really of the utmost importance to us, and while we talk about all of this, priority number one, that we keep these kids safe every day, that when y'all drop them off, we don't worry about what's going to happen or who's watching them. And that's one of the things we're trying to do with protective aid, trying to have school resource offices on campus, trying to have brigades, you know, reach the school campus. But here's the opinion on it, there's no budget for that. Zero, we've got a dollar a month budgeted towards that for this year. We don't have the money for it. So as a result, we have to have the partnership work out. And if we all work together and we all give whatever we can, this is, this is easy, it happens. But what I have to ask is if you see value in providing a safe environment for our kids, please, I beg you, come alongside us, whether it's sponsoring a half day, a one day, or a week, whatever you want to do, come alongside us, and let's get, let's keep these kids safe. Kevin Boston's going to be out here with the head of table after we're done, stop by, talk to Kevin about how, how you can help. If you can't tonight, come find him another day. His email address is below in my bio. Seriously, on behalf of the board, I really want to thank all of you guys for coming. I'm so excited for what God has in store for our future, and I'm going to ask Trey to come up and, and quote some.
I'm going to start by, uh, by, by, yeah, just tell you that Jay is all about, you know, he, he tells us that especially all of us, we all did it all the time, but it really failed us in comparison with what this man can do. And, uh, man, he's willing to be with any of us anymore in the Bible, and he's willing to send us whatever he's got rolling on at 11 o'clock tonight, and generally he is pretty regular. I, I, I hear him practice all the time, but I want you to know, this man's working really hard work, so he loves us a lot, so. So now, if you'll buy your neck, you know, we, we have awful lot to thank you for, Lord. I, I tell you, I am so thankful for what you've done in this school, what you are doing, and I cannot wait to see what you have in school for us, Lord. I just pray that you would give us the wisdom to follow it, and to ask you God at every step of the way, a prayer for restraint, and, Lord, I just am thankful for all of our kids, for our teachers, for the admin, for our team here, for our parents, for this body, and I pray that you, we honor you, Lord, I, I pray that you would, you would throw this to you, and I am thankful for your son, your son, of all of you.